Chairman, Steve Cantler, Director of Development Services. So, the ordinance lately has been not friendly to people that have been applying for accessory structures and mainly the R1, not the AR1 or AR2. So, we've got a couple variances on tonight, and I think we're gonna have a couple more, is that right, Chelsea, next week? And they're all for variances for accessory structures, either in the PD or an R1. So, the language that we are proposing, that you'll see later on, but it's the maximum height, and again, this is more for AR and PDR. It's thirty-five feet in AR1, AR2. So, just, we're trying to distinguish that. So, that's not changing, but for an R or PDR district, fifteen feet above the finished grade to the eve of the adjacent principal structure on that same lot, but not exceeding the height of the adjacent principal structure on the same lot. Adjacent principal structure, but not exceeding the height of that adjacent principal structure. So, you can't go above your house.
So, you can be same height.
But you can be same height through your house.
Gotcha.
And...
Should be no problem.
Okay.
I don't think it's written right.
Fifteen feet from the eve, but you can't go above the principal structure. So, if you have a two-story house, you still can only be fifteen feet at the eve measurement.
How far does it gotta be away from the house?
Ten feet. Accessory structure, you have to be ten feet away from the house, yeah.
A garage, if you want a little walkway or whatever, too.
Now, you could, now, that's, in the ordinance, it allows for a breezeway to connect it.
Then it becomes part of the primary structure.
That's right. Then it becomes part of the primary structure, and you can go as tall as the primary structure in that area. That is away. Okay?
Am I just not reading it right? I don't, I can't. Fifteen feet above finished grade, that's what I don't, the first part, I just don't understand, and I just wanna make sure I'm reading it right.
So, a finished grade could be after, you know, tractor bulwark comes in, you've built it up a little bit, it used to be, you know...
Yeah, no, I understand all that. It's, but it's addressing the eve.
So, it's fifteen feet...
Fifteen feet above finished grade to the eve of adjacent principal structure. Does it make sense to everybody? Maybe it's just me, maybe it's the way I'm reading it. I just wanna make sure we got it worded right. I think it's semantics, but it's...
That's the whole point, I think, to have it worded. Go ahead.
So, my, but what if it just was, so I think maybe I understand what you're trying to get across there is, what if you just said it can't be above the height of the principal structure?
Without the eve and without the above the grade?
Yeah, so what is the, just kind of the eve and above grade, what does that add to the conversation?
So, the discussion we had internally was, some folks have a one-story house that may only be twelve feet, some folks have a two-story house that may be thirty-five feet. So, how do you compensate for the fairness in accessory structure when you have two different heights of principal structures possibly? So, we wanted some consistency in there, being the fifteen feet above the finished grade.
What is the fifteen feet? Is that the maximum, minimum? I mean, what...
Yes, it's the maximum. So, remember, one of the most recent variance cases we had, it was not the structure, but it was the roof line that was above it. Yes. And so, we're trying to adjust for the roof line not to be all the same, that you could have a different roof line to it. And so, that would be above the eve is where that roof line is determined. So, you can, so the structure is fifteen feet, the roof line is not.
Talking about the ridge.
Right, from the ridge, that's right.
The ridge of the roof can't be higher than the house.
That's correct.
But what if, in this sense, we're talking about our districts, and this kinda came up in the steering committee thing, what about accessory dwelling units, right? So, let's say I wanted to build a garage, and then I wanted to build it with a second story, to have a little apartment suite on there, and it does not exceed the height of the house, but it's gonna be much more, it's gonna be much taller than fifteen feet.
So, an accessory dwelling unit, once you develop that definition, is different than an accessory structure. An accessory structure currently in the ordinance does not allow to be lived in. An accessory dwelling unit would allow somebody to live in, so that's the difference in the definition.
Okay.
Yep. And you're right, we want ADUs to have, you know, apartment on top of garage or something like that.
I have another question. What if you built an accessory dwelling unit, detached garage, put a, I mean, what if you build, attached garage with an unfinished room above it that you plan on finishing later? Is it still an accessory dwelling unit, or is it an accessory structure that would then be subject to these rules, not the ADU rules?
So, I would say if we see plans for it to be something occupied at a later point in time, then we would treat it as an ADU even though it was unfinished.
Okay.
If they build a garage first, but build it to withstand the weight of adding an apartment on top of it by crane or something like that, that would probably have to come in and have some type of variance.
What is a lot of pool houses that have all the stuff, you know, to live in, if they had a small kitchen, is that a...
So, there are some very creative folks out there, and that we know exist, and we just have to find them on occasion, and the pool houses are one of them, yeah.
But I think the pool house would probably fall into the reign of the ADU, even if it had, if it had a bathroom and...
That's it, and a kitchen and a bedroom, yeah, yes.
I just don't understand, only in that first sentence of it, where it's, I don't, I don't know why we have "to the eve of the adjacent principal structure" in the first part of that statement. Wouldn't it, fifteen feet above finished grade to the eve, but not exceeding the height of the adjacent principal structure?
I'm fine with that, let's take it out.
Does it make sense? That's what was throwing me off.
I mean, what Tim says, just, don't let, can't be higher than your house.
Yeah.
You keep it simple.
Yeah, no, I think that's the simplest, that's definitely the simplest.
Okay.
Let's be...
Now, they could go up with three stories and have a one-twelve roof on it.
That's gonna increase the size of the...
Equal to or less than the height of the house, I mean.
Just say that.
That's gonna increase the height of the structure.
It is.
Yeah.
It is.
Probably maybe ten to fifteen feet.
And some are gonna get mad because it's gonna block their view.
Couple block views.
Yep.
Is it on my property?
So, how would, how would it have affected that last variance? And what was the pitch of the roof? I don't remember. You remember what the pitch of the roof was?
No, I just know it needed to match.
They reviewed the plans, they may remember.
You remember what the pitch, was it eight-on-twelve? Six-on-twelve? So, would this, would this, is this a bit of place, would it pass?
I don't know the height of the primary structure.
What's, you know what the height of the primary structure is?
I have no idea.
Okay, okay.
You're no help at all tonight.
That's gonna be the problem. How are you legitimately gonna determine what the ridge height? I mean, you go, somebody's got to climb up there with a tape and drop it down, and then if it's a hipped all the way around, you'll about never be...
It's gonna, it's gonna be tough to even measure.
Well, what was the ejection, and maybe I missed this in all the discussion, so, if I did, I just did. What was the ejection to not using just the eve of the house? Why did we get away from that and go up to the height of the house?
Well, the roof line, to match the roof line, my HOA required I had to match the pitch of the roof, and it put me at eighteen-point-six feet.
Okay.
So, the eve's matched, I think, I think our eve was, because I had ten foot.
And there's a variance coming before us tonight. I don't know the specifics of that one, or what...
So, it's, so, we were, because there's so many different types of roof designs, and some are taller, some are shorter, some are, you know, whatever, some are flat, that we didn't want the roof design to have an influence on the total height of the building. That's the reason why. And right now, we're at fifteen feet no matter what. Doesn't matter what roof line you have, doesn't matter what your HOA is, it's fifteen feet dead-mag height.
Which is tou, I mean, that's tough on a R1, for somebody that wants to put their boat under it.
That's right.
Or RV.
Yeah.
I mean, that's where the problem...
Well, then, why don't we, is there a way to say that the structure, the ease of the structure has to be the same as the ease of the house, and then not work, and then that will...
Let the roof be what the roof be.
Let the roof be what the roof is?
Yeah.
I guess you could have a roof like that, but...
Yeah, you could do a...
I don't know if that would solve it or not, or create more problems. I'm just threw that out there to try to not be so ambiguous, I'm just sort of...
I don't wanna be ambiguous. I want y'all to be able to enforce it clearly.
So, that's the main...
Or you just say twenty feet, it can't be higher, what do we...
Now, remember, you can just go in there and say, R1 can be twenty feet.
Say twenty feet, can't be higher than twenty feet.
R1, twenty feet, now, that's gonna solve about ninety percent of the variances that we have, it's twenty feet, that's most of them that, I mean, we can do that right here.
I don't know, I'm just throwing, that way you won't have to worry about...
That's right.
...sending somebody up on the roof and all that kinda business.
Or doing a sextant and all that kinda stuff, yeah.
We have one on the, coming before us tonight, have y'all reviewed those plans, do you know? Jenkins, Silverwood. And I'm just asking if you remember.
You wanna come to the microphone, Joshua, please? Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, let's not talk about something we have coming up tonight.
That's true, that's true. Sorry, Lee.
Okay, well, never mind.
You're absolutely right. I was just using it as an example, but, no, but you're right.
Hypothetically. Hypothetically, if you had that, you know...
And I say that one because of the, well, I don't even wanna talk about it, we'll talk about it later.
You see any downside to twenty feet, just flat-out twenty feet? I mean, I don't.
Do whatever they wanna do.
Yeah.
If that'll capture ninety percent, I mean, if it's over that, we could always, they could always ask for a variance.
They'd all ask for a variance, yeah.
But I mean, you know, fifteen, we're gonna see the variances every week, or every meeting.
Yeah, you are, and we are, you are. And you're, yeah, you got two next week, or next time.
And I mean, we can say eighteen, you said yours was eighteen...
Eighteen-six.
Six, but I mean, you could say, you gotta make the, you just have to do a waiver.
Steve, or Lee, just a question, is this something that we could make an administrative thing instead of having to come before us to, to look at, to write the ordinance, so that it can be done administratively instead of...
Well, if we get the ordinance done, they won't have to go through the eve, it'll just comply or not.
It's actually complying or not.
Yeah, the reason you have in the hearing will be because of, it's a variance. So, if the twenty feet will eliminate ninety percent of those, then, you know, that's, they have, as a matter of right, they can do that.
I was thinking a hundred percent.
Yeah, right. I'm with you.
And just bear in mind that a lot of the neighborhoods have...
High restrictions.
Have covenants that are gonna, that are gonna, exactly, that are gonna kinda govern them.
Yeah, some will.
Not all of them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Think of, like, structures off of Courthouse Road, for example, that I see in the backyard, towering pole barns...
Yeah.
Over a six-foot fence, it just kinda looks silly.
We should drive through the farmlands of Illinois, and it's a little old house, and the barn's like ten times bigger.
Okay.
So, where are we at?
We can do twenty feet, we can do what's written, we can write something new, we can do eighteen...
What you think, Jamie?
Can you start a Hoover?
I can't, I can't.
I like having something standard, personally, just because it keeps from, you know, why did this guy get it, and why I didn't get it? Oh, it's because of the pitch of your roof, or it's because of this. I like, I like a standard.
I would if houses were standard, but everybody's house is different, and that's how I got my situation I did, my roof line was just, put it over whatever we had.
Well, your HOA's gonna dictate, if you have an HOA, it's gonna, your architecture review committee's gonna dictate your structure.
Say again?
The architectural review committee of your HOA is gonna dictate how it needs to look.
That's how I got, the situation I got into.
Right.
So, is that gonna prevent...
They would still come into play either way.
Right. That's what I'm saying, is it gonna eliminate that problem with HOAs, per se, and...
I kinda like a set standard, too, just 'cause it's easier to administer, and we don't have to measure everything.
I think adjacent grade is a very, that's arbitrary, because no land is perfectly flat, it's gonna be sloped, they're gonna build up to it, and...
They're gonna build up to get around it.
If they need a, you know, so...
So, if you eliminate the whole adjacent grade eve of the house, right, it, because they could be different, right?
Yeah, by finished floor, basically.
Yeah, you just say, you know, the, you know, twenty feet, and not to exceed the high, height of the house, that's where you don't get into, like, this whole thing about roof pitch and so on and so forth, let the HOAs handle that.
Twenty, up to twenty foot, not to exceed the height, the peak of the house?
Yeah.
That would, I think that would fit. And if there's a variance, we'd have to look at it.
Yeah.
And you could add, like, plus or minus blah of the roof pitch, and let them figure it out.
Is that needed, though?
I would say if you had a certain roof pitch, and one was, like, way different, it would stick out quite a bit, but...
But that's more aesthetics, I guess, is what...
And that might be the HOA's problem, not ours, right?
Yeah, it would be, but it's just a building standard for, you know...
So, twenty feet...
HOAs just go away and don't even have a ARC.
I know, I know.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, twenty feet at the eve, but not exceeding the height of the adjacent principal structure.
That sounds good.
That good?
That could work.
And I mean, look, if it...
How are you gonna make them prove that, though? That's gonna be the...
They have to submit elevations, they have to submit...
Y'all have wings.
And then we'll have the variances, oh, we built it too tall.
Great, yeah, those are fun.
Well, I mean, that needs to just be part of their...
It needs to be part of their plot plan.
Part of what they do, because they have to...
They've gotta do setbacks and everything else, you know?
Yeah, it's their problem.
It's their problem to prove...
Their issue, they want to change, so...
But I think that'd be fairly easy to administer, sure. And if, and if it doesn't work, we'll just, we'll do it again.
And the total height's probably not that hard to calculate if you knew the, you know, measure the, if you knew the pitch, and, I mean, it's not...
We have some experts over there.
Is there an app? Is there an app that would do it? I mean, I would think it would be simple.
That sound pretty good? Okay.
I'm fair, I'm good.
All right, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Figure that one out.
All right, item number two's off. Item number three, Effingham County Master Bike Pedestrian Plan.
Yeah, hey, Jonathan Holm, county engineer, good evening, everybody. Just kinda wanted to share, I guess, the overall view of kinda where the Forsyth Group and staff have landed with, you know, the master plan, and kinda start there. I think that might be, you know, beneficial for us to spend most of the time there, just making sure we're okay with, you know, the routes that we're selecting to potentially put, you know, multi-use trail or bike lanes. The means and methods are kinda open, but I think, you know, kinda narrowing down which roads are, you know, you guys would like to see before we, you know, formally adopt this, you know, just giving y'all an opportunity to look at.
Are we gonna have any workshops with our biking community, or...
Yeah, we've had, we've had a few stakeholder meetings with the Georgia Hilo folks, and the different cities and municipalities, and the TAB's been a part of it as well, so we've had a lot of outreach with, you know, different partners in the region, and then we even had a public, you know, surveys done, which are gonna, you know, citizen feedback.
We'll definitely be getting public input from just...
Correct, yeah, we've already opened it up, and we've put, I think we put a survey out at park locations, if I'm not mistaken.
And we also had a general public meeting, not just stakeholders.
Oh, yeah, that's true, too.
So, we had a general public meeting as well, to get their feedback.
Reason why I ask is, I've got a customer mine at the bank that is an avid bike rider, and he asked me a lot of questions, and I'm not a bike rider. So, I just wanna make sure I can point him in that direction, so he can give his two cents.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I mean, I'm definitely open to that, I mean, we've, we've had public meetings already, so I don't know if we wanna have another public meeting, but...
Well, no, I mean, why don't we just send out the plan? Is it on the agenda tonight?
It is. Or no, it's not on the agenda for approval tonight, 'cause I didn't know if there were gonna be changes that...
Yeah, so why don't we just send out, if we've gotten one person that's additionally been asking, we can send out the full draft of the plan, and then they can, then, you know, they can take a look. If there's additional questions, then we can bring them up when it brings, when it comes up for approval.
Okay.
What I don't see on here, and I've seen them on the road before, is Old Augusta and 275 Ebenezer Road. I've seen quite a big group riding Old Augusta before.
Okay.
And I believe that they were staging, they may have been staging down at Highway 21, Port Wentworth area, and then going up that route.
Well, it is on, and I can share my screen, I think I can do it through click share, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. It's the Meeting Chambers S-120.
Yes.
Okay. Let me know when you guys can see it.
Okay.
So, Ebenezer Road, I believe this is it, it's, it was presented on, or proposed in 2020. We may not, and again, it's a GDOT-controlled road, so the, the GDOT routes, we don't really have so much jurisdiction, but we can certainly put that in there as a recommendation, for sure. And then Old Augusta Road, I think we got it going down to Fort Howard, but we do not have it going all the way down to...
To Parkers, yeah.
Yeah, to 21 at Parker, so would you like to see that go down to 21?
I'd be curious to see that, and I'd be curious to see about, 'cause if I was riding a bike personally on the road, I believe I would go Old Augusta, instead of taking a left on Ebenezer, I would probably going up to, Rinkett-Stillwell, road right there.
Yeah, it's Rinkett-Stillwell and Chimby.
To Springfield, and then going up 119 to...
Yeah, and I do see 'em riding that.
Yeah.
I see bikes out that way.
Yeah, and we do have, this was on here, it says it's proposed in 2024, Stillwell Road, that was identified in a much older bike study.
Guyton.
I gotcha, to go west, and then you take 17, or the Trutland Trail slash the Georgia Hilo Trail is something that's looked to be implemented, and that's what this line right here is, is that Georgia Hilo Trail, which is a part of the, you know, planned route from Athens to Savannah, so, I mean, that's one of the major routes, north-south.
Is there a timeline on that, Jonathan, with Georgia Hilo?
We just got a set of plans produced, and we're reviewing it right now from a staff standpoint, I can share those with you if you'd like to take a look at it, but I think once it's us, and then Georgia Power is making comments as well, 'cause they have the...
Their sur easement.
That's their easement, that's right, and so, we're, finally got a set of plans there, and then I think the next thing to do would be to, I think, formalize those plans to final set, and then set it out to bid, if we can get the MOU worked out with Georgia Power, which I think we will.
But we wouldn't be setting the whole thing out for bid, we'd only be doing a section of it, from Guyton, probably, maybe to Sand Hill if we can make it.
Yeah.
But definitely to Pinor.
We certainly wanna phase it, we wouldn't wanna do it all in one slop, that's a big project.
Will every county be responsible for their areas?
Yes.
For that, okay.
But I'll, I'll make a note to share the plans with you where we're at.
Would that be pedestrian-friendly as well, or just bikes?
What's that?
Would that be pedestrian, pedestrian-friendly?
Yeah, so that'll be a, you know, a ten-foot, or ten-to-twelve-foot wide asphalt-separated trail, so for both pedestrians, bikes, whatever else, not golf carts, but everything else.
Nothing electric?
Yeah, I mean, you could do electric bikes, I mean, that's, that's, e-bikes, that's not gonna be a problem, it's, it's just the, I think the golf carts is probably what you wanna try and avoid on, but, but that's about it.
I suppose it could be riding it inside-by-sides.
Exactly.
No dirt bikes, you know, none of that.
I've already got all the commissioners' spandex already for when we make our team, so, need your sizes.
It's gonna be a good look.
Support, support, I have two knee replacements, so I'll, I'll, I'll be the safety cart.
Well, we'll get you, no, we'll get you a recumbent bike, and you'll be good to go.
But, yeah, there's, I mean, some of the major routes on here, I mean, we've got Courthouse Road on here, there's Low Ground Road is on here, tentatively reserved right now, and then one of the major east-to-west, I would argue, is Blue Jay.
How's it aligning with our park plans?
Park plans, yeah, I mean, we're, we're trying to get, you know, connection to most of our parks, the parks here are located in green, so, you know, anything that's near the Hilo Trail, we're gonna have little stub outs, too, and then, you know, same thing, I mean, if there's like a school or something that we can, you know, get connectivity to, I think that's ideal, so, you know, schools, parks, and, you know, major neighborhoods or subdivisions.
Cool.
If I'm saying it correctly, but...
And, and you may have said this, too, did, did you say that there was going, you said it would be a ten-to-a-twelve-foot lane, and there would be a separation between the highway and the ten-to-twelve-foot lane?
Yeah, so...
Is that what you're saying?
There's, it, it, in the back end of the report, we get into some recommendations for the different routes, a lot of these are multi-use trails, some of them, though, we're, we're just recommending either a bike lane or a sidewalk, so it's kind of a mixed bag of different measures, depending on what route we're talking about. But, but ideally, we'd like to be able to create a network of those separated, let's say, ten-foot asphalt trails that are not on the road, so that, you know, you could, you know, potentially get from, you know, one, one side of the county to another with, with only having to cross roads, but not to, not having to ride on the shoulder or something like that.
Well, I think that should be, I, I just worry about when you talk about saying, you know, 21 and Old Augusta, you know, and Blue Jay, the amount of traffic that's on those roads, you know?
Right, so you gotta separate it, yeah.
You've got to separate it on those major types of things, I mean, there's, there's, there is the bike trail, there is the bike trail already, like you said, from Stillwell to, it turns actually on Wiley and goes down there.
That's right.
But it's about this big, you know, and it's right on the highway.
Right.
So, I mean, nobody ever rides in it, they just ride on the highway, like, so it's not really, it was almost a waste of money to me, and they said it cost a million dollars to do it back then.
Right. Yeah, no, I...
To me, it was just, I don't know.
I agree ten, a hundred percent, I mean, I think we gotta get things that, you know, the novice biker would, you know, enjoy, and, I mean, the hardcore cyclists, they, they don't mind being out there in the road, but, you know, naturally, to, you know, see people use it, I think we gotta make it to where it's desirable to use it, so, you know, putting that multi-use trail on the backside of a ditch, you know, away from, you know, the traffic and the road, makes it a lot more desirable for the constituents to use. I think, I'm trying to think of other networks to mention, I mean, we do have all the GDOT stuff on here, some of the stuff to mention is Effingham Parkway, Benton Boulevard, and DeCham County already has sidewalk in there, so we wanna see, you know, something continue on up, Effingham Parkway. One thing that did make its way on here, and again, we haven't approved this yet, but I figured this is a good time to talk about it, is the potential route for a water line, and potentially there being a path on that, I don't know if we wanna include that as a recommendation or not.
On the line rail?
What are you talking about?
Warrenale, Warrenale Parkway, or what?
The, the water line route for...
Oh, through Warrenale Track?
No, what water line?
The job is Jones Extension, we discussed.
Water treatment.
Oh, no, no, we can't, uh, we can't put a, they won't let us put a bike trail on, on the Georgia Power easement, no.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, yeah, they, on the, on the heavy utility one, they, when we talk to them about the high-low, they're like, yeah, we can do that, but. Don't, don't ask on the, um, on the, on the transmission line, yeah.
Okay, well, we won't do that, I'll remove that one, um. Again, I mean, I think that's not a problem, we have a lot of east-west, um, different options. I think the funding source for this, um, you know, there's TSPLOS money that is there. Um, one thing that, um, I don't know if we want to talk about this now or not, but, um. I don't know if we want to look at revising our ordinance to incentivize, um, developers, you know. If they are making a major subdivision along one of these identified routes, um, letting them. Potentially, this is something I was talking with Steve, if it's a great idea, give Steve credit, if it's a bad idea, give me credit. Um, but, um, you know, something that we had, were kicking the can with was potentially letting them use that as. Green space or towards their, you know, percent that they have to, you know, do if they're going to build the multi-use trail. And the right-of-way, um, potentially, um, and so that could be another way of helping actually see this come to fruition. Um, the ob, you know, the obvious thing is, is you would start to see these segments of a multi-use trail or something be implemented. That won't connect potentially, but, um, you know, the idea would be, well, we have it in place and eventually, you know. We can connect all the pieces and get it connected.
Or, or, or they can contribute, right, and so, um, and, and one of the things that. We do not have it in our impact fee ordinance, but Savannah, when they just redid theirs, um, they, they included. They separated out parks and trails, and the reason is, you cannot really, uh, you've got no. Impact from, from business or industry on parks, but they, trails, you can assess them on simply because they. Because, um, people could use them to get to work, right, uh, similar to a road. And so, impact fees could be a way, if they're on a, what we could do with the ordinance is to say, um, that. Um, if they are on a route that has, um, a, a trail planned for it. Um, that they have to contribute to the trail, we will put it in a segregated account, and when the trail goes in. Uh, we just utilize those funds in addition to impact fees, um, and there's also funds, um. Uh, since we're in, most of this would be in the MPO area, there are segregated funds, um, simply. That can only be used for bike and pedestrian, um, uh, for, on, on the federal government side. So, there are kind of multiple sources that we could use to cobble together, particularly on some of these larger projects.
Is there something at Safe Streets for all, I know we didn't get the funding for that, but.
One, that's a separate source, and Safe Streets is interesting because, it's different because the MPO, you know, you. You, you, is basically determined by the MPO committee. Safe Street is a different program where the individual counties, um, regardless of whether they're in an MPO or not, can, um, apply directly to the feds. Um, and you can apply, and if you've got, that's one of the reasons why we wanted to get this bike and pedestrian plan done, is so that, um.
Better point to present?
Yeah, so that when we apply, they tend to look at, not necessarily connectivity, but safe. But safety is their criteria, so we could do like a section of a trail that, let's say, connects a neighborhood to a school. And it includes a crosswalk, you know, or something like that, um, but I think bike trails in general. Um, you're going to have to use, um, you know, multiple sources to get where you want to go. And there's a ton of private grants, which, um, with the folks at, um, the High Low Trail. Um, have been, um, researching and applying for, so.
Whoever did that, and I know this was a while back, but that Highland Subdivision in Pooleer, if y'all ever driven in there, of course, it's a monster. You know, huge amount of thing, but they have.
Yeah, did a good job of interconnectivity.
You know, with trees separating the roads, and then they have that nice, what you're talking about, that multi-use trail, where you have, s- you know. Segments of grass and trees, and then a nice open pathway, you see people, if you ride in there, you see people on those pathways all the time.
Great.
And so they would, I don't know how they managed to do that, but they did a really good job, it's a very pretty area. And it's all man-made, I mean, they did cut down much of the trees, but it's all man-made, but.
Well, any other routes that you guys would like to see added or removed? Okay, well, um.
Are you doing number four, the Jennifer Tree?
I am doing the tree. So, Jennifer Circle, um, the tree, I got results back, um, this is an exhibit showing. Um, I think, uh, kind of a proposed solution from the survey results, and then, um, after talking with, uh. Clint Hodges about maintaining safety access, we think that this is a solution, um, before I spend too much time here. Would you guys like to just see the survey results that we got back from?
Can you give a little background on it? I'm kind of looking at this one too.
Sure, yeah, so Jennifer Circle, the tree that's here, um, how this came about was, I got a citizen complaint about the road. Um, so this tree, um, that's located here is split, um, there's asphalt that goes on either side, and. The, uh, root, um, structure is, you know, destroying the road, um, so. Um, I went out there, looked at the tree, saw that this tree was massive, and, um, you know, I decided to. You know, after talking with Tim, that we would get an arborist to, you know, get his opinion on it before we just started maintaining the road. Because I know trees can be sensitive, um, especially if you're doing work underneath the, uh, canopy. Um, so, anyway, we got a arborist out there, and he was impressed by it, and he, you know, he believes this to be, uh, you know. A champion tree, we just got to get it registered and all that, um, and so.
Champion tree, like a?
A champion tree, uh, so it's one of the biggest trees in the, the state, um, for its kind, yep. It's a huge tree.
It's big, I've been through there before, but.
I think it's in the top five, um, if we were to get it submitted for its kind.
It's bigger than one, the ones at Grace, those are, Grace are huge.
Yeah, this one's a monster, um, so, um, anyway, uh.
So that's the kind of tree, or it's just a big old tree?
That's a classification, or, you know, the Georgia Forestry has a title that they give to the biggest specimen, you know, tree, and. Um, anyway, so they call them champion trees, um, but, anyway, so what we've done as a county, um. Last year is we approved, uh, uh, you know, proposal for the arborists to go in and. Maintenance the tree and preserve the tree and put steel, uh, ties in the canopy of the tree to help preserve the tree. The tree's been there since before the country was founded, is the arborist's estimate, so that's what we're dealing with.
Really?
A three hundred-plus-year-old.
That's amazing.
Tree that the county has found, it's, you know, we, we've been maintaining it, I guess, for this whole time, so, um.
County property.
Yeah, it's within the county right-of-way, so this is.
What if it encroaches?
Well, it is.
It's already doing that on one property line on Stephen.
So we're not cutting this one down?
We are, we are going to cut it back to the, within the county right-of-way, um, because it's better for the tree anyway, um, it's a lot of stress the further out. It goes, so it's actually a good thing that you, you know, trim it back, um, some, but, uh, that way it can continue to, you know, live. Without toppling over on itself, so, um, anyway, so since then, um, you know, the question's been, you know, well. What do we want to do with the road? That's how I kind of got into this, um, and so. Um, what I was potentially, you know, considering to propose is, um, you know, eliminating the road. Um, underneath the, uh, tree, and then essentially we'd be closing the road. But we would have an access that goes over the ditch, um, line to the, um, I guess it's Plan West. Um, which is shown here in this red hatch, uh, we'd put out a sign saying for emergency use only. Um, and, you know, that would allow, you know, from a safety standpoint, you wouldn't be worried about emergency vehicles. You know, having to take a longer route or anything like that, you would be able to maintain your access, but. Um, you'd also, the advantage of this is you would be limiting the amount of vehicle traffic underneath the, um, the canopy of the tree. Um, so, um, what we could do if this passed, you know, we could put up a little fence, which is what this little red. Uh, line is here, we would have to relocate a driveway, um, a little bit, and then extend a pipe out. Um, but we could remove the existing asphalt underneath here and then mulch it, um, and so this is. Um, or a version of this was presented to, um, all the different, you know, property owners. Um, I think I submitted it over to forty or fifty residents that would be impacted, um, by this. And allowed them to be able to comment for up to a month, um, and so I've got the survey results, um, a quick synopsis. Um, does that make sense as far as the background? Are you okay with me moving forward? Um, a quick synopsis of it is, I think, seventy percent of the eighteen that responded back. Were in favor of doing, you know, closing the road, um, and, yes, trees deserves protecting. The one, or this note says, it appears the cul-de-sac, there was a cul-de-sac that was presented, um, and. I decide, you know, decided to move away from doing a cul-de-sac, um, because in order to do the cul-de-sac like the resident was saying. Um, we would have to get more right-of-way, so instead of doing a cul-de-sac for an emergency turnaround, we decided to go forward with. You know, or potentially propose this, you know, bypass, that way we wouldn't have to get more right-of-way, um, so I feel like. We've alleviated that citizen's concern, um, no, it would. Close off the ability, uh, to have another exit road, also would disturb bus route for school. And then it goes on, but, um.
Did you looking at doing a fence around it?
Yeah, uh, just a, um.
Something low?
Just like a wooden fence, similar to what we have for.
Like a short one?
Foot or whatever you.
Yeah, like we have at, uh, McCall Park, or our typical black wooden fence post, just to keep vehicle traffic out. And you could have an opening for pedestrian.
Or you could do chain link with the slats low?
Yeah, we could, I mean, the fence type is, you know, I'm, I'm not, you know, one way or the other, but, um.
Just didn't want to be six-foot privacy fence, that looks silly.
Oh, no, something that's open, um.
Sounds like a white farm fence that just kind of goes.
That's right, I think we.
Something is a barrier.
Like maybe it's just three or four feet high.
Yeah, three or four foot high with the X in the center and.
Slats, you know, for semi-privacy, still lets air go through, but it's, gives you some kind of privacy, but.
I don't know if privacy's really needed, um, in my opinion, um, but.
It just looks better on a chain link though.
What is it just going to be?
If we do chain link, yeah.
Just going to be some ballers or something there to?
Um, I was, I, what I was thinking, uh, now let me see if I can pull up, uh, let me see if I can pull up.
It's here so many people talk about the wooden fence is not lasting that long and.
It, it would be similar to.
I'm thinking something you see in a state park.
Well, what we use for, we have a standard black fence that we use at our park.
Yeah, so the county has a standard kind of, uh, park fence that we moved to, we're doing it now in Baker, and then it's al- it's already at McCall. Um, very easy to maintain, um, and the county would maintain this fence, it wouldn't cost that much to do, but I think it would look nice. It's open, it allows views of it, but more, more, more importantly, prevents cars, um, from just continuing through it. Um, and you, we'd, we'd obviously have an opening for the emergency and for bikes and pedestrians to get through.
Whatever looked best for that area and the tree.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm missing something, where would the road then be?
Where that red is?
The red, I thought that was the fence, where, where's the road?
The road's going around it.
Uh, the road's right here, um, so it circles around the tree.
Kind of like a one-way?
A one-way.
That was the emergency, that's not the emergency?
No, that's the emergency, there, there is no road around the fence any, around the tree anymore.
Traffic.
Others not.
Or, or proposed to be.
Drive around it.
No, no, it's just for emergency purposes in, in a one-way direction.
That's right.
So how do the people that have, how do you get from one side to the other?
Yeah, you'd have to go around, um, and I, let me pull up a map and I'll, I'll show you, um.
I don't think it's as inconvenient as it seems.
No, it's, it's not a big detour.
You're just, you're just closing this road, basically, is what you're, I guess I'm just realizing that.
Yeah, just the small portion of it, um, let me see if I can pull the. And turn the addressing off, so, come off Goshen, come down Hugger or Huger Street.
Hugi.
Hugi.
Hugi, forgive me for mispronouncing, um, come down Hope Lane, Jennifer Circle's right here, there's the tree, so we would close it right here. And so if you lived right here at this house, and they, they did respond back, and I think they were in favor of it, um, you know, we. We can go through the list or, you know, look and see exactly who's okay with it, but, um, anyway, you could. What you would need to do is come down either Hope Lane or come down this, and then go down Jennifer Circle. To, uh, then go down on Lauren Drive or, uh, Jennifer Circle to go all the way around, so. Um, it's not too much more of a detour, in my opinion, but.
So on the, the, uh, survey that you did, you just took the people affected around and sent them a survey? Some sent it in, some didn't, so how we did it, everybody would be affected?
Right, yeah, I sent the survey, um, and I can turn, well, it went from where my mouse is located at here, where Hope Lane's at. Encompassed all these folks down to here, and so I sent out, uh, letters in the mail to every single homeowner.
With eight, eighteen people or something?
More than eighteen, no, it was like forty or fifty, um, so we sent out letters with the survey for them to respond back, and. They could call, make questions, we put it in the newspaper, um, we're having a workshop tonight, you know. And then if we close the road, we'll have to have a, you know, or, you know, I'll have to create an agenda item, we'll have to advertise it, you know, there'll be.
Yeah.
This won't, they'll have plenty of opportunities to, to come out and, um, say something, um, but. Trying to do.
How many voted for closed versus open?
I think it was about seventy-five percent, uh, let me see.
Seventy-five said close it.
No, seventy-five percent were in favor, yeah, closing it, I'm sorry, yeah, and then twenty-five said, were, were opposed to, um. Closing it. And when I presented it to them, it was with a cul-de-sac, not an emergency access, so I will say that. So if anything, I've opened it up a little bit more than what I was even presenting before, and I took what their comments were, like, they were. There were some that were concerned about bus route, we could potentially open that emergency access up for bus route, or say bus and emergency. I don't know if we want to do that, but I don't have a problem with that, um.
What would keep people from using it?
If you open it up for a bus route, that's going to open it up every day and people are going to use it.
Yeah.
Well, you, you put a sign out, and, you know, the idea would be to, to tour them from doing it, but I mean.
Let's still use it, as long as it's robust enough for them to use it, I wouldn't see a problem with it. Best right, if they can use it, they're going to use it.
They're going to use it, yeah, well, yeah.
They're going to take the shortest route and the quickest.
Sure. So, would we want a sign there to limit it for emergency use, or?
I think you'll have to block it off.
Other than, other than emergency.
Other than the emergency, but have a lock or something, I don't, if, if.
That's not going to work with emergency, they can get around by the time they fiddle with a key.
Well, I'm just saying, if, people are going to use it if it's there and open to use, it's just human nature.
Yeah.
I've, I've traveled this way my whole life, and you're telling me now I've got to go home a different way? I'll just run through this road right here, it's no big deal.
Single lane and we list it as emergency, you probably reduce some of the traffic through there.
Yeah, say, some people have a conflict.
Imagine the person that lives there is going to police it too.
And you could, you may put up some, could we put up some like historic signs about the tree and.
Absolutely.
Emergency only, you're preserving the, the.
Yeah, I think.
Historicity, is that a better word, of the tree and?
Yeah, what we're wanting to do, I think eventually, is get this registered, and then get a plaque out, it'll, you know, the Georgia Forestry will probably pitch in on that. Uh, I'd imagine, or if not, you know, maybe it, it's only a minimal amount for the county, but. It, it's only a minimal amount for the county, but, um.
Amazing, that's good.
Yeah, it's a, I think it's a unique, um, situation, um, but.
Well, well done on that, man, that's good, good work, guys.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'll, um. I guess I'll prepare this, I guess, for another, um.
Yeah, so that we can get enough for a public, um, you know, cause we're gonna. Do it far enough in advance that we can get, uh, l- letters out to this, letters out to everybody again. Letting them know when the public hearing is, uh, to move forward with it, but to move forward with this plan.
Sounds good, I appreciate it. Um, got three minutes left.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, that's all the items, so, makes me want to drive out and check it out again, it's been a while, it's.
That's for motion to adjourn.
Make a, a.
No need to motion.
No need to motion?
Yeah, with all.
Take that.
Yeah.
Take that, you have the bathroom.
Yeah, two.
Yes, that was adjourned.
We're taking that. Yes, I dropped it. I mean, I'm taking. So that'll be mentioned in the beginning?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got it, I got it, I got some fruit blue.